Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're on the air, so it's time for us to start. I'd like to welcome everybody to the -- what identified on the agenda is a special meeting, but the truth is this night is a regularly scheduled meeting for the Development Commission, so it's a regular meeting of the Development Commission. And as such, it gives us the opportunity to modify our agenda. And what I would like to do is to bring up the notion of the approval of the minutes from last night and move that forward. So if people are willing to modify the agenda, I'd need a motion to do that.
I move to modify the agenda to include approval of minutes?
Okay.
Second?
Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed, and so we have on the agenda now the notion of approving the minutes. And so, as I asked last night, I hope you have all had the opportunity to read those minutes. Anybody have any corrections or changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose that, in light of the fact that these are unusual meetings for the council, both in terms of scope and the amount of detail being presented by both sides, that it might be appropriate to reference or make reference to the full transcript as well. And I'd like to suggest some wording, possibly to amend the minutes, to be revised as the commission sees appropriate. Have some candidate wording, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
I'd like to suggest these minutes are provided as a written record of the meeting pursuant to IMC 18.03.100C. A video recording of the meeting and a full transcript of the proceeding also exist as public records.
Thinking that is a motion?
Yes, and the suggestion is that that be placed as a footnote on the first page of all of these minutes, a footnote to the title or immediately following the title of all the minutes.
So with that motion, we would be introducing the transcript as part of the record, which wasn't -- I mean, it was -- it sounds like a suggestion from the applicant to have a transcript in the city, but it wasn't initially going to be considered as part of the record, so we're making that decision instead of council making that recommendation. So I don't know if that matters. Question?
If I might interject, I know you had a question last night about some of the legal obligations with respect to Development Commission, and if you'd like, I'm prepared to respond, I think, to the question that had been asked last night.
I think as part of the discussion for this motion, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Okay. So, thank you for giving me an evening to review your code a little bit more in depth to make sure that I understood the scope of both your meeting obligations as well as the hearing. So there are two legal obligations with respect to the Development Commission and minute-keeping purposes. So one is under the Open Public Meetings Act. There is a section of that statute, 42.30.035, that does require that the minutes of all regular and special meetings, except executive session, be promptly recorded, and such records shall be open to public inspection. So that's state law. And then, as required by code, as was exactly paraphrased, the commission shall keep a written record of its proceeding. So there is that obligation. As a practical matter, I understand, and this is what I want to just confirm with you all, that typically it has been your practice to approve minutes at the next meeting, so minutes from tonight, and theory would be approved at the next scheduled meeting for the Development Commission meeting?
That is generally the practice, but there are instances where, for what, there may be some reasons to delay the minutes preparations, let me get pushed out a couple of meetings, but in close proximity is reasonable to get those minutes on the record.
Okay. And then I thought this would be helpful for you all to understand, there are some additional definitions within the city code that have to do with public hearings and records for purposes of appeal. So this is separate from meeting minutes obligations, okay? So this is the definition, and the definition of public hearing under IMC 18.02.180, a hearing with advance -- defined as a hearing with advanced public notice, where the public is given the opportunity to provide written and oral testimony, and the testimony is made part of the official project record. The hearing conducted by a single hearing body or officer authorized by the city to conduct such hearings that creates the city's record through testimony and submission of evidence and information. Okay, so that's the definition of a public hearing. As has been discussed in this proceeding, from this public hearing, if the parties choose to appeal, that would go to a closed-record hearing. A closed-record hearing under IMC 18.02.030 is defined as an administrative appeal on the record to the city, including the city council, following an open-record hearing on a project permit application, when the appeal is on the record with no or limited new evidence or information allowed to be submitted and only appeal argument allowed. Okay, so those are the two definitions. So we're in the public hearing phase. Afterward, there would be a closed-record appeal, and that was the definition. So for the purposes of that closed-record appeal, the code does include or specify what constitutes the appeal record, and I think this is probably the provision most relevant for this evening. The appeal record shall include written findings and conclusions, taped or written transcript, and all exhibits entered into the record. And then finally, I just wanted to note for you all, the hearing examiner rules, even though this is really gets beyond the Development Commission's scope, but at least because it's been raised in the context of an objection to your meeting minutes with respect to what record would go up on appeal, the hearing examiner rule 2.12.1 states that pursuant to IMC 18.04.250F, that's the last provision I just read, the record of an appeal shall include the application or petition, the departmental staff reports, all evidence received, which shall include oral testimony given at the hearing, all exhibits and other materials submitted as evidence, all statement of all matters -- excuse me, a statement of all matters officially noticed, a decision or recommended decision containing the findings and conclusions of the hearing examiner, recordings made on electronic equipment, and an environmental determination made pursuant to SEPA if applicable. So that was a lot of information, but the bottom line is, is that there is, for purposes of appeal, a definition of what constitutes the record. It does not include reference to the Development Commission meeting minutes. If the parties choose to offer that as per the hearing examiner rule, as, you know, additional evidence that they think falls into one of those categories, they may do so, but in terms of what constitutes the record, it would be your written findings and conclusions, which would be made at the conclusion of this hearing, the transcript, which has been referenced, as well as the exhibits that are entered into the record. So the question of bringing into evidence the transcript, then if we were to admit it to the record, that would, you know, it would be either an exhibit, or it already would be a part of it, to the extent that the code provides for that.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
So if the transcript is already included in the record regarding appeal, probably our reference to it here might be superfluous, is that right?
It is already defined as a part of the appeal record in the code. So I think the distinction here is that your meeting minutes that are as part of the agenda being asked for adoption, those, in my mind, are not clearly part of the record as specified. It may become a part of the record if the parties advocate for that beyond this proceeding, but at least in terms of what your record is that constitutes the basis for your decision, that is not -- the meeting minutes are not a part of that. And as if I understand correctly, you often make decisions before your meeting minutes are entered into the -- adopted by the commission.
That's correct. Right. So, and if I understood you correctly, the rules for the commission require that we prepare and adopt meeting minutes?
That is correct.
So my question would be, historically, at least in my experience, we have never had a transcript included in as part of the public record. We've always had minutes.
So can I...
As a consequence of that, I'm wondering if we don't have to make some comment to let people know that there's a minutes, a video, and a transcript?
I don't know if it does any harm to do that, but remember that all of our meetings are recorded with video and audio, so that would be part of the record that would go to appeal if a decision was appealed. In this particular instance, they're doing a written transcript as well, so actually two, essentially a written recording and a video recording exists for this proceeding.
One question would be, if the reference that Richard had, the language in that, does it make it part of the record to just state that there are -- there is a written transcript being taken? Does that make it part of the record if it's just referenced in the minutes?
If the minutes become part of the record.
And at this point, they're not?
Correct.
Even if approved, they're not?
Correct.
But the transcript itself would become part of an appeals record, correct?
Yes, according to the code.
Yeah. So it's my understanding that possibly this reference would be redundant, but as Commissioner Brennan says, probably not harmful, and the intent of this was to address the objection during last meeting and to provide it as additional information, another level of detail that's available as part of the public record, simply to state that we are acknowledging its existence, and we do so at the beginning of all minutes that refer to these meetings.
So we have a motion? Is that you've made that request, or that addition to the minutes as a motion?
Correct.
Or would we have to move to approve minutes and then add that as an addition?
The motion was -- I didn't hear a second, just for neutral purposes, but then the motion essentially, it says to add that to the record, add that to the minutes, the motion to the minutes.
Right.
If there wasn't, I don't know, officially had a second or not, but if not, second the motion. Excuse me?
I can hear him.
Sorry. So if there wasn't a second to that motion, I don't know if I heard one or not, but I'll second the motion.
And we've had a fairly significant discussion. Is there additional discussion that needs to be made?
Could you reread the...
Right, well, this is candidate wording, you know, obviously for revision as required. These minutes are provided as a written record of the meeting pursuant to IMC 18.03.100C. A video recording of the meeting and a full transcript of the proceeding also exist as public records.
Guess that phrase, "as public records," in terms of, can we state that a transcript is a public record?
That's an interesting question. It's actually related to the question I asked last evening. The transcript is being prepared by the applicant. I'm not aware if it's been submitted to the city until it becomes a document used or retained by the city. It is not a public record.
And we haven't reviewed the transcript, say, if we're not approving the transcript?
So the transcript at this point is not a part of public record, even in terms of our Development Commission meetings?
I'm not prepared to say whether it is or it isn't, just because I don't know the retention, but I mean, I do think it's correct that the recording exists as a record and that there may be a transcript available. I don't know that it's accurate or not to say that that yet is a public record.
So if we cut off the, as part of public record part?
Well, additionally, originally, it was to be, and may be reviewed for further detail, instead of the public record statement. In other words, and a full transcript of the proceeding also exist and may be reviewed for further detail, or maybe consulted for detail or whatever.
Or if we just said, "also exists," period?
Also exists, period.
Somebody would be notified of it? We're not approving it? Do we think?
I mean, it's acknowledging that something exists, that we know exists, so I don't know that there's anything -- the comment about, I understand the question about whether it's a public record or not, that's not something that we need to debate here. I think we could just state that a video and a written transcript exist of the proceedings and leave it at that, would be my suggestion.
Again, the idea was to address the objection that we encountered earlier regarding transcript versus minutes.
Yeah.
As a way of at least acknowledging the transcript's existence.
Yeah. So would you reread the proposal as you would now say?
As proposed then. These minutes are provided as a written record of the meeting pursuant to IMC 18.03.100C. A video recording of the meeting and a full transcript of the proceeding also exist.
Second agree with that?
Yes, I agree with the amendment.
So without further discussion, are all those in favor of adding that to the minutes, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So we've added that. Now, we have to make a, have a motion on whether we approve the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the September 26, 2018 Development Commission meeting.
A second.
Do I have to say as amended? We'll say as amended.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So those minutes are approved.
It's your turn. Mr. Chair, I move the adoption of the meeting minutes from October 24, 2018 as amended.
Second.
Let me get everybody involved here.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, October 24 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes included.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the commission meeting on November 29, 2018 as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion, corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ran out of commissioners. We need another one. I gotta go back.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of December 5, 2018 as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we've approved the minutes that we have in front of us. We will now proceed with the public hearing. Mr. Snyder, you were examining your witness.
Yes, you can. I do need to make it clear, I'm not waiving the objection I stated last night at a separate meeting to the form of the minutes that you are adopting. I appreciate Mr. Stanford's amendment. I think it was a step in the right direction, but the fundamental problem is that the issue we're litigating, the one of IHIFC's vested rights, is one that this commission does not have jurisdiction over. You have jurisdiction over the staff reports and the recommendation in the staff reports, but the city has successfully defended in front of the hearing examiner its position that the vesting determination embedded in those staff reports cannot be separately appealed, and it's clear you do not have appellate jurisdiction over that issue. So the meeting minutes that you've adopted are an opinion about the evidence, they're not evidence itself. And, you know, we do not agree with everything that is expressed by way of an opinion in those minutes. They are inaccurate. The easiest way to demonstrate that is that the first four evening minutes do not refer to Ms. Carey as being present, even though she was present all four times. So again, it's just complicating the record on appeal, and I'm saying this again, just to make it clear, we're not waiving our objection, and we do not think it, they should be part of the record reviewed by the hearing examiner or reviewing court. So thank you for letting me make that record. We are asking your indulgence tonight to interrupt the testimony of Ms. Heim and instead call Patrick Malaney. He's not available on the next two nights that we've scheduled for this, and we would like to get him on and off tonight, and we alerted the city's council last night that we would be calling him this evening. So with your permission, we would like to proceed with Mr. Malaney.
Mr. Chairman, the city has no objection to that procedure.
Thank you. And I would ask for your indulgence. For most of us, this can get a little tedious, not that it's not one of the most exciting things we've ever done, but the reality is, if we could try to limit our focus for about an hour and then take a five-minute break and then go for another hour, if you could just kind of be a little sensitive to that, that would be really helpful to us.
We would be grateful, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So it's 6:53 right now, so we'll try to wrap up in about an hour from now and take a break, if that works for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
So our first witness tonight is Patrick Malaney. Do you please swear him in?
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this cause, when you can choose the one true and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Patrick, we know each other, but for the record, I'm Jackie Carey. Patrick, do you mind if I call you Patrick while we're taking your testimony?
That's fine.
Thank you. And will you speak into the mic just one more time, make sure it's on?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So Patrick, for starters this evening, can you describe, just at a high level, your experience in the land use and legal arenas?
Yes, I was admitted as an attorney in Washington in 1992, and I practiced land use and property law since that time, since 1997. I've been an attorney at the firm of Foster Pepper. I've done, my practice principally involves land use matters.
And in your role at Foster Pepper or other places in the past, have you done any work in the city of Issaquah?
Yes, I've been working in the city of Issaquah since approximately 2005, I believe was the first project that I worked here. One of the clients I represent is Costco, and so I've done several land use projects associated with their corporate headquarters, including working with city staff on the drafting and implementation of the Costco development agreement.
Did you have any other projects in Issaquah besides the Costco projects?
Yes, I worked on the office buildings, I believe it was over by the, it used to be called the Siemens site on Issaquah Creek. There was emergency permits that had to be obtained one year when the creek took a big chunk of the bank out. I worked on a, with the former city attorney, Wayne Tanaka, on an age-restrictive covenant that was associated with some properties on Front Street. As I said, I worked on what was the master site plan for the Issaquah campus that included Costco. There was additional property brought in to that mitigation property, and then there were some wetland and other issues associated with some of the expansion that Costco did on that property.
How long have you been working on Shelter's projects?
I began working for Shelter in the fall of 2016.
And are you familiar with the development agreement, the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement that we've been talking about in this hearing?
Yes. Over the course of my representation of Shelter, I obviously reviewed it, but previously, when I was working on the Costco Development Agreement, I reviewed all of the development agreements that the city had entered into up to that time. That was in 2015.
And if we could turn to what was marked last night as S25, it's a copy of the development agreement. Give me just a second here, I'll pull it up on the screen for everyone as well. So is this a copy of the development agreement that we were just talking about?
It's a portion of it, yes.
And so it looks like you got the first portion of the development agreement and then Appendix L attached to that, is that...
Yes, so it would be, I would call it the main body and Appendix L. Of course, there are several other appendices before and after Appendix L that compromise the entire agreement, plus there were subsequent amendments to it as well.
And what, how do the development standards play into this development agreement? What did the development agreement enact exactly?
Well, the development agreement created, in, the way I view it, is it created a bucket of allowable development. There was commercial, residential, retail development rights, certain square footages were created, and there was an analysis of impacts of that development and the creation of mitigation and credits that were designed to offset the impacts of the development. Some of that spelled out in Sections 3.2 and 3.18 of the agreement.
So, and before, well, let's turn to those sections in a minute, but before we do that, the development standards under this development agreement, what purpose did they serve in the Issaquah Highlands?
So the appendices to the agreement have specific development standards that govern every aspect of the allowed development, including the process that various permits went through. That's Appendix L. And then there were everything from road standards to setbacks, you know, plating standards, all that kind of stuff is in there. And then there was a SEPA analysis of various impacts, for instance, traffic impacts and things like that. The idea was that if you purchased a property in there, it came with whatever development rights the master developer had allocated to that property, and then the offsetting mitigation also accompanied that purchase.
Are you aware of any other development regulations besides the development standards in this development agreement that were in place for the Issaquah Highlands while the development agreement was in place?
No, development in Issaquah Highlands was governed by the development agreement, except that if, for instance, there was some, something that wasn't covered by the development agreement, there's a hierarchy of the defaults down to the regular code if something wasn't covered, but almost everything is covered by the agreement.
So if we could turn in this document to Section 3.2.3.
Okay, give me a second. Okay, that's entitled Vesting of Development Standards and Mitigation.
Yes, and I'm working to pull it up on the screen for everybody else here, too, Okay, so we have it up on the screen now. What does this section require?
Well, if, I'll go back to it here. So this states that all development within the UGA portion of the Issaquah Highlands shall be governed by the development standards, and those standards are implemented through a number of various permits and land use approvals. You can see it, it has short plats, binding site plans, plats, site development permits, building permits, and other permits and approvals, and then those are all bundled in the term implementing approval. The development standards, you can see that's a capitalized term, and under Section 6 of the definitions, which begins on page 29 of the agreement, and it's actually on page 30, the definition of that says it means collectively the project L- 30, the definition of that says, "It means collectively the project elements, development standards, mitigation measures, and other conditions of development set forth in this agreement, the exhibits, and appendices thereto." So the idea was that all of the standards that are set forth in the agreement are applied to a specific project through these various implementing approvals that are discussed in Section 3.2.3.
And in that definition, development standards, it says mitigation measures. So is it, your understanding that the mitigation measures are included as part of that?
Yes, that's my understanding. There are several sections of the Development Agreement that specifically talk about things like traffic, fire, police, government services, stormwater, those are ones that come to mind anyways.
So if we could turn back to that Section 3.2.3, Vesting of Development Standards If we go down to 3.2.3.2, "After Build Out" is the title of the paragraph.
Okay. 3.2.3.2. Oh, I should just point out that where I was talking about the hierarchy of, in the first part of 3.2.3, it says, "To the extent this agreement does not establish development standards covering a certain subject, element, or condition, then the project is governed by city codes and standards in effect upon the date of this agreement," except, and then it goes into a bunch of exceptions. So that's that hierarchy I was speaking about.
Are you aware of any other development regulations that were in existence for the Issaquah Highlands besides these development standards?
No, not, I mean, like I said, virtually everything is in the Development Agreement. That was just the default provision in case there was something that was, happened to be outside.
And then going down to 3.2.3.2, "After Build Out," what does this provision provide for?
So the agreement was set up with an original period of 20 years. I think that's discussed in Section, let's see, where is that? Yes, in the first part of Section 3.2.3, it says, "A build-out period of 20 years following," and that was triggered by the first final plat approval. And so the agreement contemplated a 20-year build-out period. Then the agreement didn't terminate after that 20 years expired. It could go on indefinitely after that period, and so there was this provision called "After Build Out," and that provides that the development standards shall continue to apply to all applications for implementing approvals submitted after the expiration of the build-out period, except either party may terminate this agreement and the zoning and development regulations may be modified as provided in Section 5.1.3. And that section deals with how you transition out of the Development Agreement and into replacement regulations.
So let's turn to that Section 5.1.3.
Can you have that one?
What does this provision provide?
So it discusses the term of the agreement, which it says is "at a minimum through the build-out period," and then it continues after the build-out period unless and until either the city or the partnership or the master developer provides notice of termination. And then it establishes a procedure for how termination is to occur, and that's down towards the bottom where it says, "No sooner than six months after the notice of termination, the city shall hold public hearings and shall adopt zoning and related development standards for the UGA portion of the property or portions thereof as determined appropriate by the city."
Does this section say anything about vested rights?
No.
Do you read this section as allowing for divesting of vested rights?
No.
Have you ever heard of the term permanent vesting before?
No, and to go back to your other question, in fact, if you look at the last line of this, it says, "Upon such adoption," so that's adoption of the replacement regulations, "this agreement shall terminate and thereafter," so that's like forward-looking, "the UGA portion of the property shall be governed by the adopted city zoning and related development regulations." So that's typical of whenever land use regulations would occur, after the date of the new regulations would be adopted, then they would, they would be the governing regulations going forward from that date, unless a project had vested to the prior set of regulations.
And so if a project had vested to the prior set of regulations, what would happen to that project after new regulations were adopted?
It would continue to be analyzed under the prior regulations that it vested to.
And so going back to this concept of permanent vesting, have you ever heard of that before?
No, that's not a term that's used in the case law of vesting.
Is it a term that you've heard used just in practice or in general before?
No, I have not. Vesting is vesting. It's kind of like an on-off switch. Once you have it, you have it. That's the whole point of it.
So how about divesting? Have you ever heard of somebody being divested of their vested rights?
No, and my understanding of the case law is that vested rights are property rights, and the cases specifically say that you can't enact subsequent regulations that retroactively strip those property rights. That would be a taking.
So I'd like to turn to some of the meetings and interactions that you had with the city over time. And one of the things that we were using last night during Ms. Heim's testimony was a set of meeting notes that she had taken during different meetings. Are you familiar with these notes?
Yes. For all of the meetings that I attended, I, the notes were first prepared contemporaneously, and then I reviewed them against my notes for accuracy, and so I'm familiar with them and how they were prepared.
So, and it's from what you just said, it sounds like you reviewed them at the time that they were prepared, so immediately after those meetings?
That's correct. They were usually prepared the day of or the day after the meeting.
Did you review them in preparation for this hearing as well?
I did.
And so there's a binder in front of you, the old meeting notes. Counsel, this is the same binder that we had out last night, so you have copies of the documents in there. So if you could turn to the meeting notes for a meeting that took place on September 21st of 2016.
Okay. I'll bring that room here.
Okay. So last night, Ms. Heim was talking about this meeting, and she mentioned that you were one of the attendees at that meeting. Were you present at this meeting?
Yes, I was. I'm listed there as a meeting attendee.
And do you recall, just in general, what the purpose of this meeting was?
This was the first meeting that I had attended with Shelter, and my recollection of the purpose was to discuss various possible options for the future development of Shelter's property.
And turning down to the bottom of that first page there, it's the very last bullet point, what did Director Niven have to say about the Development Agreement at that time?
Well, one of the things that Shelter was investigating was the possibility of maybe extending the current Development Agreement or amending the Development Agreement, and so that was being discussed. And at that time, Mr. Niven indicated that the city was considering terminating the Development Agreements in part because of the regulatory burden of having, you know, five or six different Development Agreements in the city that required staff to go look at each Development Agreement to determine the applicable standards that would apply to certain properties.
And actually, on that point, I'd like to turn back to the Development Agreement for just a second. I'll pull it up once more here. Because you'd mentioned the different standards that apply under different Development Agreements. Are there processes for review under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement that are part of those standards?
Of permit applications, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's Appendix L, which I believe was attached here. And in particular, there are a couple of tables at the beginning of Appendix L. So it's entitled Processing of Land Use and Construction Permits. And like, if you look at Appendix L Part 1, which is on page L3, I think, there it is, you'll see that this set out various, for each different type of approvals, like for instance, plat is over in the far, preliminary plat is under the city council box on the far right-hand side, and site development permit is on the, in the box under administrative on the left-hand side. And then if you go down, you can see the timelines that were supposed to occur for the processing and approval of the various permits at issue.
And Ms. Heim talked about, walked us through those timelines yesterday. Did the city follow these timelines in processing Shelter's applications?
No, as the communications will make clear, that was a big issue because they did not follow the timelines. They didn't even come close to meeting them.
And so there's, there's a number of different applications that Shelter has pending right now. We heard from Ms. Heim yesterday that there's the preliminary plat, and then there's a number of SDP and ASDP applications as well. For any of those, you know, based on this chart, is a pre-application or collaboration meeting required?
No. If you look at, for instance, a site development permit, which is the middle column, it says, "Submit preliminary application," and then it says "optional" after it. And that doesn't even occur for the administrative site development permit, or it's not on the plat box either.
Did the city require collaboration meetings and preliminary application meetings for Shelter's applications?
Yes, they did, and they required information to be provided in advance, and then the meetings, sometimes scheduling of the meetings was six weeks or more out. So there was a very lengthy and onerous process that was implemented that was not consistent with Appendix L.
In your experience, what did the preliminary applications for SDPs or the preliminary plat look like?
Well, in every other jurisdiction that I've practiced in besides Issaquah, when you talk about a preliminary application, it's almost a back of an envelope or maybe just a site plan where a developer comes in and says, "This is what I'm thinking about doing with my property," and the city usually responds with, you know, "You should be aware that this, this road might be deficient, or if you're going to do that, you know, you should consider these things." So it's just an, it's really, it goes towards project feasibility and identification of issues that an applicant might want to address when they make a formal application.
And so in Issaquah, how do those compare?
The Issaquah process, the pre-application process is like a permit process. There's a formal checklist that requires things like a site survey and input from design consultants, and so it's, it would take, I would say, two months maybe to pull together all the information, and also an investment of several tens of thousands of dollars in order to prepare the packet that then the city requires you to upload, and then the city, if it deems it complete, then it will allow you to schedule the meeting. So it's, as I said, it's unlike any other pre-application process I'm familiar with.
And then the collaboration meeting that I mentioned, was that required to take place even ahead of the preliminary application meeting?
That's correct.
And what goes into that meeting?
So I don't recall the specifics for the collaboration meeting. I think that in general, it's more like what other jurisdictions would call the pre-application meeting.
So let's turn back now to the September 21st meeting that we were talking about. So you should have the meeting minutes if you'd like to refer to those.
I do.
You turn to the second page of those notes, five bullet points down the page. What did Director Niven have to say about mitigation when the Development Agreement terminated?
Well, this, this occurred before there were any permit applications that would vest, for an implementing approval, that would vest the, a project, a particular development project to the development standards. And so I believe this discussion was in the context of if the Development Agreement terminated without vested development, the question was, what would happen to the mitigation that had been created to allow development on the properties? And he indicated that the mitigation could evaporate and disappear, in this case, we was talking about traffic. But he also acknowledged that it would be unfair for the city to require a developer to essentially pay twice to mitigate the same impact. Sometimes that's referred to as double dipping. And so he talked about the idea of possibly having mitigation credits or some mechanism that would recognize the, some of the value for the infrastructure that had been constructed as part of the Development Agreement.
And so a minute ago, you said this was before any applications were in, so as of the date of this meeting, Shelter didn't have any land use applications that could have been vested at that point?
That's correct. We were just generally talking about what could be, what were the possible development options for the property.
And so is it fair to say that you were kind of talking about it in two separate buckets, that there's vested mitigation under permit applications, and then there's mitigation for the remaining allowable development that might not yet be connected to a permit application?
Yes, I don't remember the specific amount of square footage that was allocated to Shelter's property. I think it was about 1.8 million square feet of commercial development, and then they also purchased some retail entitled- also purchased some retail entitlement from the master development developer, and they even had three residential units. And so the idea was, if that wasn't all utilized at once, how would that be treated when the city transitioned from the development agreement to their new regulations? That's what that discussion was about.
Was there any question in your mind that vested permit applications would include vesting to the mitigation under the development agreement?
No, I was certain that it would because the provisions of the development agreement and the definition of development standards expressly includes the mitigation measures that were laid out in the development agreement.
You turn to page three of those notes. I'm looking about halfway down the page. Five bullet points down. What did Director Niven have to say about what might happen to Shelter's property in the future?
Well, this was in the context of whether the council would be willing to consider modifying the allowed uses on Shelter's property to allow for mixed-use development that would include a larger residential component. And Mr. Niven expressed the opinion that the city council was invested in the idea that Shelter's property was supposed to be commercial, and that the city council members were willing to essentially let the property sit undeveloped until a commercial user might come along sometime in the future.
And going down the page just a little bit further, what was, what did Director Niven have to say about the mixed-use development proposal? And I'll back up and add a little bit of context. Last night, we heard Ms. Heim testifying about the mixed-use proposal that Shelter had pursued for a period of time with the city. How did that come up in the context of this meeting?
Well, there was a discussion about the city's willingness to consider, as I said, the idea of more residential and a mixed-use proposal. And Mr. Niven said that, essentially, that the city was not willing to do that. He got rather exercised about it and indicated that things might have been different if, in the past, Shelter had allowed the city to option part of Shelter's property while the city looked to find an institutional or educational use for the property.
Did he say anything about how things would have turned out if Shelter had provided that option?
Yeah, the note here is consistent with my recollection, and it says, Keith mentioned that had Shelter made a different decision, the five-year period would have almost run by now, and staff might have looked more favorably on Shelter's proposal.
And by a different decision, he's referencing that decision to not allow a five-year option or gift the property?
That's correct.
If you could turn to the fourth page of those notes. Three bullet points down. The notes mention your name. Did you ask Director Niven about what would happen to projects vested under the development agreement when the development agreement terminated?
Yes, so this goes back to that prior discussion I was talking about. The one bucket was mitigation for square footage that wasn't subject to a development permit that would be vested under the agreement. And so this question was, okay, how does the city treat projects that would be vested under the development agreement? And Mr. Niven said that if a project was vested under the development agreement, it would remain vested for the term of the vesting permit. And then Ms. Sloman indicated that once a zoning change occurred after a permit had been run, so say, for instance, an applicant had asked for an extension on a permit, under the city's regulations, the city is not required to provide an extension, and they can require that in order to give the extension, that any, the permit conditions be modified to comply with the law that has been changed. So, in other words, a permit would vest for the term of the permit, which is consistent with my understanding of vesting law, but if a person asks for an extension beyond that, the city could impose additional conditions.
So let's turn next to our November 14th, 2016, meeting with the city.
Okay.
And Ms. Heim testified last night that you were one of the people present at this meeting. Do you recall being at that meeting?
Yes, I do.
And what in general was the purpose of that meeting, to your recollection?
This was a continuation of the previous meeting. Shelter had gone back and taken the input from the city and was, again, looking to determine what the future development options would be for the property. One of the ideas that was being explored was, the city was concerned, or Mr. Niven indicated that, the city was concerned that if residential was allowed, the residential would be built, but the commercial part of a mixed-use project might not be built. So there was discussion around whether you could build the commercial first and then obtain a certain allocation of residential based on the amount of commercial that had been constructed, or could there be a cap on different phases of the residential, that kind of thing.
And so they were discussing essentially that mixed-use proposal and how that might take shape?
Correct.
If you look down at the fifth bullet point down there, what did Director Niven have to say about the vesting available under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement?
Well, this was a question of what would happen. There was some discussion also about the moratorium, even though it didn't apply to the development agreement properties. But the question was, how will the vesting, like what the vesting coverage was between the time that the city was going to terminate the development agreement and the adoption of the new regulations? And Mr. Niven said that the vesting available under the current development agreement, there would not be a gap between the development agreement and new zoning, so, which is consistent with the way that Section 2.2, or I'm sorry, 3.23.2, the after-build-out section, is written.
And moving down in the notes just a little bit, what did Director Niven have to say about the vesting date under the development agreement?
So we were, the city, this issue came up because the development agreement, the Appendix L that we were looking at before, it talks about the site development permits as an implementing approval. But under the city's current procedure, the city was recognizing pre-applications as vesting permits. And the reason it was doing that was because if it, the pre-application and site development permit process was very lengthy. For instance, a site development permit decision sometimes had as many or more conditions as a preliminary plat, and it could take a year or even two years to go through that process. And the way the city's permits are set up, you can't apply for a building permit until you have not only applied for a site development permit, a land use permit, you actually had to obtain a decision on that permit as a prerequisite to applying for the building permit. And if the city didn't recognize the vesting at that earlier stage, their regulations would have run afoul of a famous vesting case called West Main versus City of Bellevue that essentially says a municipality can't place hurdles in front of an applicant's ability to obtain its vested rights.
And we'll turn to this a little bit more later, but did the city acknowledge to you publicly that it had a West Main problem?
It did, and, well, it said that by recognizing that preapplications vested, it did not have a West Main problem. Mr. Niven, in his November 20, or I believe it was November 27, 2017 memo, indicated that both city staff and the city attorney had recognized that if they did not allow vesting or preapplications, they would have a West Main problem for the reasons that I just articulated.
And we can turn back to that memo in a little bit more detail in a minute. If you turn to, there are no page numbers on this, but if you turn to page three, and then five bullet points down the page.
Okay, one, two, three, four, yes.
What did Director Niven have to say about the fate of Shelter's residential units of entitlement?
So this was in the context of the discussion of the new replacement regulations. The city, as a general proposition, had been saying that it was trying to do like-for-like, or that, in other words, if an area had been developed as a single-family residential development, it would assign zoning to that that was similar so that the development that had occurred would be conforming with the new zoning, I'm sorry, the new regulations that were placed on it. Except that with the three residential units that Shelter had, he was proposing that those would be converted to commercial because he didn't want continued residential zoning designation on Shelter's property.
All right, we're going to turn to a different exhibit, but I need just a second to look up the numbering from last night. Okay, so let's turn to Exhibit S14, and I'll grab a copy for you from over here.
Okay.
And for the Development Commission, I believe we provided a copy of this one last night as well. We have a few extras this evening that we can hand out. Can you please describe what Exhibit S14 is?
Yes, this is a December 1st, 2016 memo from Ms. Sloman to Nick Abdnauer and Gary Young, so that would be Polygon and Shelter. And what it addresses is what I was referring to before, the allowed development in the development agreement. So it talks about the amount of square footing. For instance, if you flip it up just a little bit more, you can see there's, you know, 394,632 square feet of commercial, there's retail, there's the three units of residential, that's on an ERU basis, and then the commercial of 1,238,705. So basically, this memo talked about the Polygon property and the Shelter property and the development capacity that had been allocated to each of those properties.
Looking at that first paragraph in this memo, and this was from, this memo was from Ms. Sloman, what did Ms. Sloman have to say about a vesting determination?
Yes, so there was a vesting issue that was raised, and Ms. Sloman indicated that Director Niven would address that in a separate interpretation, which was ultimately done, I believe, on March 27, 2017.
So let's turn and look at that March 27, 2017 interpretation, which is Exhibit S13. And I'll put this one up on the screen as well. Is this the interpretation that you were just referring to?
Yes.
So this is addressed to Mr. Abdnauer, and it looks like he's affiliated with the Issaquah Highlands Investment Fund, LLC. What projects was he involved with?
Well, Ms. Heim can talk about the relationship a little bit better than me, but my understanding was that at one time, Mr. Abdnauer and Mr. Young were business partners in Polygon, and then Polygon split off, and part of it was residential development and part of it was another development. It gets a little bit confusing because there was Issaquah Highlands Investment Fund and then Issaquah Highlands Investment Fund Commercial. But the bottom line was that both, what I'll refer to as Polygon and Shelter, had rights in adjoining parts of property that was located in Area 4 under the development agreement.
And so in conversations with the city up to this memo, had city staff been addressing the Polygon projects, the residential projects that you were mentioning, in kind of unison with IHIFC's commercial projects?
Yes, I'm trying to find the, I think I lost it already. That's exactly what was occurring on the December 1st, 2016 memo from Ms. Sloman. And I think, yeah, if you look at page four of that memo, it shows you the properties, I think it's Figure 1. There you go. So... So I think it's correct that what is now the Shelter property is B for the most part, and the Polygon property is A. Is that correct here? Okay, so, so, yeah, the point is, they were both in the same area, and you can see, well, even from this page, they're discussing the various mitigation aspects of the agreement as they apply to both properties.
So when you received this letter, was it your understanding that this was an interpretation that was applying to both the Polygon and the Shelter properties?
Yes, and I mean, it makes sense that it does because they're both subject to the same development agreement, and they were both seeking the same type of permits, primarily preliminary plat permits and site development permits.
So turning to the second page, the last page of that letter, that, the top paragraph on the page is also the last paragraph of the letter. What does this paragraph provide?
So what it says is that if you meet the requirements of the code for a complete application, and that was set forth in 18.01050, then that application would be vested, as it says there, and would be unaffected by any future changes in zoning or development regulations, so long as the application remains active. This would include any changes as a result of termination of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. And I think if you go back to the front page, you see that that conclusion was set forth for both, in the first paragraph there, it was set forth for the single-family preliminary plat, and it was set forth in the second paragraph for a site development permit. Those ones were already in process, and then it discusses the same conclusions for the proposed preliminary plat and site development permit for the West Ridge Single Family North plat and the West Town Home North site development permit.
So were the plat and the SDP applications that are discussed in this letter with respect to Polygon's projects, are those the same types of permits that Shelter is also pursuing?
Yes.
Just for different types of development, residential versus commercial?
That's correct. I mean, the preliminary plat was to create 83 residential lots, and then the site development permit was for that, for townhome development, but the plat, the permit processes are exactly the same.
I think the next couple lines of questioning might take a little bit of time to get through, and it's 7:46, so I wanted to be respectful of your one-hour-ish timeframe. Either I can go for another 10 minutes or so, or we can take our break now.
Go for 10 minutes.
Okay, will do. All right, so this, the letter that we've been talking about was in March of 2017. I'd like to jump back in time just a little bit to January of 2017. It's the next meeting in chronology that you were present for with the city, it's my understanding. If you could turn to the point in the meeting minutes that talk about that meeting.
That's January 17, is that the one?
January, just a second, I want to make sure I get the date right. January 17 of 2017.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Heim had testified yesterday that you were one of the people that was present at this meeting. Were you at this meeting?
Yes.
And if you go down to the seventh bullet point down the page, it's a little over halfway down the page. Did Director, did Director Niven ask you to take a look at anything with respect to vesting in the development agreement?
Yes, as the note reflects here, it says, Mr. Niven indicated that he was hoping that Shelter would have me take a look at identifying what was vested from the development agreement and needs to be incorporated in the new zoning, and I believe that that discussion was in the context of mitigate, the mitigation as we were discussing before.
And so did you follow up to this? It said, it says in the notes that you were going to take the first crack at identifying what's vested to the DA and what needs to be incorporated in new zoning. Did you follow up to that?
Yes, well, there were additional discussions about it that occurred, I believe, in March, and then ultimately, in the beginning of May, we provided Mr. Niven with a detailed matrix that went through all of the appendices that I was discussing and laid out the various mitigations that had been provided for the allowed development.
And let's turn to that. So this would be Exhibit S-29. It's a new exhibit in our record. Is this the May 12 letter that you were referring to a moment ago?
Yes.
And we don't need to go through line by line, but will you describe, just kind of in general, what you did in this letter?
Yeah, well, as you can see by the first sentence, it says, "I'm following up on the city's invitation to prepare a mitigation summary regarding offsets and credits that should carry forward following the city's termination of the development agreement." And so then, if you look at the spreadsheet, if you go to the next page, this went through each provision of the development agreement and laid out all of the various mitigations that I discussed earlier for parks and water and sewer and police, fire, concurrency, public works, see what else is in here, stormwater design, SEPA compliance. And so it summarizes where you would find that in the development agreement, and then also what Shelter's, the, what Shelter either, in some cases, asked for city confirmation or in others suggested what it believed would be the appropriate way to handle the mitigation, and that's, if you go back again to that other page, you see it, that's the part that's set forth in bold.
And so at the time that this was prepared, in May of 2017, was this still in that timeframe where Shelter didn't have any applications pending?
Yes, Shelter had met, I can't, I believe there had been at least a collaboration meeting on the preliminary plat. I believe that occurred in, on March 21 of 2017, but it hadn't formally applied yet, and we still had the issue of, depending on how much mitigation was allocated to vested development, how would you handle the rest of it? So that's what this was addressing.
And so that's the, what I characterized as the two buckets earlier, so.
Correct.
And so was this memo geared towards the latter bucket of allowable development that might not be tied yet to a permit application?
That's right.
So did it in any way change what you had said earlier about mitigation being vested by nature of a vested permit application?
No, that mitigation, because it's expressly defined, as I said, as a development standard, would be vested per Section 3.23 of the agreement for any implementing approval, which included preliminary plats and site development permits.
Let's go back to the January 17 meeting. Earlier, when we were talking about the development agreement, you'd mentioned that one of the implementing approvals is a binding site plan. Can you describe what a binding site plan is?
Yes, it's an alternative method for, depending on what jurisdiction you're in, either dividing commercial properties subject to some type of common plan, or in other jurisdictions, it's used just to create building pads that can be used for commercial development. So it's, typically what you do is you have lots, or you establish the building pads are lots, and then there's common infrastructure, and there's legal requirements for how that's supposed to work together, like parking or common storm drains, things like that.
Did you discuss binding site plans with respect to Shelter's property in this meeting?
We did, because that was one of the implementing approvals that was mentioned in the development agreement, and since Shelter was considering doing a mix of commercial and retail, we thought that might be a possible way of segregating their large parcel in order to accomplish those uses.
At this time, did Director Niven think that a binding site plan was an option under the development agreement?
No, he wasn't aware of, that it was included in the definition of implementing approval in the development agreement. So he originally said it wasn't allowed, but then we pointed out that it was allowed, and so then we had a different conversation. I'm sorry, I'm on here.
Okay. So if you turn to the back page of those meeting minutes, the second to last bullet point down says next steps. Can you describe what those next steps meant?
Yes, the first one says that I would follow up with a response to legal standing for request to extend. Mr. Niven had questioned whether Shelter could ask for an extension of the development agreement because in his mind Shelter wasn't the master developer, which was Port Blakely, and we pointed out that there had been an assignment of rights through what's called a designated successor, which was, it went from Port Blakely to Microsoft to IHIF and then to IHIFC. And also, there was an assignment by virtue of Shelter's purchase of its property, and later on, I can't remember exactly when, Port Blakely sent a letter confirming that that was the case, but that's what that referred to.
And so you had to go through additional time and back and forth to, just to try to demonstrate that you did have rights under the development agreement?
Yes, that we were allowed to ask for an extension or, or ask that the terms of it, that the city consider altering the terms of it. And then also, I was requested to work on the memorandum that we just discussed, that I provided on May 12, regarding which mitigation credits survive the, it says survive the DA, but it meant survive the termination of the DA.
And what about this, the second bullet point there, Shelter to son Keith proposed to submit all requirements via email, is that referring to the binding site plan?
Yes, one of the issues was the city didn't have a very established process for what documents you would need for a binding site plan, so staff suggested that Shelter review the preliminary plat application materials and the binding, I'm sorry, the site development permit materials and kind of create their own list of documents that they thought would be appropriate to submit if one were going to submit for a binding site plan. So that's what that referred to.
So at that time, Director Niven was asking you to create the permitting process?
He was asking us to create the documents that would be required for a complete application, create the list of what we thought those documents should be.
For a binding site plan?
Correct.
Let's turn next to the March 21, 2017 email, and before I start there, I've hit the eight o'clock mark. I'm happy to keep going.
Why don't we take a break? Why don't we take a 10-minute break?
Okay, thank you.
I think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we left off before the break about to talk about the March 21st, 2017 meeting. Will you please flip to the notes for that meeting in your binder here?
Yes.
What are -- it looks like there's a list of attendees here at the top. Who attended this meeting?
Mr. Niven, Ms. Sloman, Mr. Irvin, who I believe is the city's traffic engineer, Gary Young from Shelter, myself, Mark Valdi, Dave Clayton, Katyn, and Tia Heim. And I believe Mr. Valdi and Katyn were consultants for Shelter.
And what was the purpose of this meeting?
This was a collaboration meeting for the binding site plan slash preliminary plat application that Shelter ultimately went with the preliminary plat as the method for its land use approval.
Did Director Niven or Ms. Sloman have anything to say about vesting under a plat?
Yes, we -- well, actually, we discussed the vesting regime in total, and I believe that's in the notes here.
I'm actually looking at the first page of the notes, the second bullet point.
Yeah, there we go. So the -- as I mentioned before, there was a discussion of whether we should have a BSP or a plat, and Mr. Niven suggested that since the city was more familiar with the plat process, that they would be supportive for using that instead of the BSP. And so that's what we decided. And then we discussed what the vesting would look like for that, and Mr. Niven indicated, which was consistent with my understanding of the law, that a preliminary plat would vest for five years, a final plat would vest for an additional five years, and then site development permit would vest for three years. So that would be the sequence of vesting the development to the development standards in the development agreement.
Yesterday evening, Ms. Heim talked a little bit about the plat and vesting under the plat. What's the importance of plat vesting for Shelter's projects? How does that tie together with their SDP and ASDP applications?
Well, my understanding of Washington law, it's based on a case called Noble Manor. And Noble Manor essentially says that a plat application vests an applicant to the attributes of the development that are shown on the plat application materials. So for instance, if uses are shown or building envelopes are shown, that additional level of detail would vest the development regulations associated with those details.
Did Shelter show building footprints in its plat application?
Yes. Originally, it was submitted with a narrative, and the reason for that was that under the timing of the Appendix L, Shelter had anticipated that its site development permits and administrative site development permits would have been processed by the city. But because of the delay that was caused by the requirements we talked about that were outside Appendix L for pre-application submittals and pre-application meetings, those permit applications were delayed. And so after it submitted its initial application, it was supplemented with the allocated development and the building footprints that we talked about. And then ultimately, that was the version of the plat that was sent out by the city in the public notices for the plat.
The version that had the building footprints on it?
That's correct.
And then moving a little bit further down the page in your notes there. Looking at the eighth bullet point down. What did Director Niven and Ms. Sloman say about plat vesting in this meeting, aside from just the timeframes on it? What -- was it going to follow a certain process? How did that work under the development agreement?
Yes, so the note is consistent with my recollection, and it says that Mr. Niven and Ms. Sloman confirmed that the preliminary plat would follow the process in the development agreement, that's Appendix L. And Mr. Niven added that if the development agreement was terminated while we were in the process, that we were vested with one caveat, and that had to do with the fact that the city might no longer have a urban village development commission, since the urban village development commission was associated with the development agreements, and so it might go away, in which case another commission might be substituted, for instance, like yourselves.
Would that change the process at all, or was it just a substitution of bodies?
No, it was just a substitution of the body that would ultimately perform the functions that Appendix L had assigned to the UVDC.
We're going to turn to a new exhibit, which is going to be S30. Can you describe what document S30 is?
Yes, so this is a letter from Mr. Niven dated April 4th, 2018, and it's to Mr. Schneider. This letter was the city's response to a letter that had been provided to the city by Mr. Schneider. I don't recall off the top of my head which provision of the development agreement calls for it, but as part of the dispute resolution provisions of the development agreement, there was something called a notice of default, where one party formally notified the other party that it believed that it was in default. So Mr. Schneider had sent a letter to Mr. Niven indicating that Shelter believed the city was in default of its obligations, and this was the city's response.
Will you turn to Section 5 of this? I think it'd be A5. Did Director Niven have anything to say in this letter about the plat vesting that we were talking about?
Yes, in fact, he cites to the Noble Manor case that I just talked about. You can see it right there. And he indicated that where a plat application actually identifies specific development plan or concepts such as building footprint setbacks, et cetera, and then he quotes from the case to say, "What is vested is what is sought in the application for a plat," which is consistent with my understanding of vesting law.
Is it your understanding that the SDP and ASDP applications that Shelter has submitted are consistent with the building footprints and other information that are shown on the plat?
Yes, they are consistent. That was the idea, was that the plat would create the lots, and then the site development permits would provide the details for the development, and then the general -- that building footprints and things were shown on the plat submission that was provided. I can't recall exactly when it was, certainly when the development agreement was still in effect, sometime in the fall of 2017.
So following this March 21st, 2017, meeting that we were just talking about, and actually, I think there's one more point that I'd like to talk about in that meeting before we move on. If you turn to the second page of the notes, did Ms. Sloman provide any guidance on the plat process? I'm looking about halfway down the page in the notes.
Yes, she indicated that it would take about six months from start to finish, and she discussed generally the various steps that would be required.
Did those steps include a collaboration meeting?
They did. That was the meeting that we were attending on March 21st.
How about a pre-op meeting?
Yes, they were -- the city was requiring a pre-op meeting despite the fact that Appendix L did not require that.
So six months start to finish. Do you recall when Shelter submitted its plat application?
I believe it was August 11th of 2017, but I could be a little bit off on that.
Really August timeframe, roughly. And so six months from that date, start to finish, did that happen?
No, my understanding is the plat still hasn't been reviewed and approved.
So after this March 21st meeting, we talked about the May 2017 letter that you submitted already. Was there any follow-up in the following months from the city regarding that letter that you sent, the May 12th letter?
Yes, I tried to follow up, I believe, in July, excuse me, and then again in August. At that time, Mr. Niven, I think, first said that he was very busy, and then he said that he had to discuss the mitigation with the city's attorney, Mr. Haney, but we never heard back regarding, you know, the analysis that had been discussed at those prior meetings. And I guess to elaborate a little bit more on that, when we had been talking in the earlier meetings and through the spring of 2017, Mr. Niven was talking about the concept of what he called a mitigation certificate, which would recognize some way of providing credit for the mitigation that had been constructed. And then later on, as it evolved, he told Shelter that Mr. Haney had determined that the mitigation would simply evaporate on -- at the end of the development agreement, and that no mitigation credit would be provided, which was a position that Shelter strongly objected to because it didn't seem consistent with the applicable law.
Turning to new exhibit S31. Will you please describe what this documented S31 is?
Yes, this is a letter dated October 25th, 2017, that I wrote to the city attorney, Mr. Haney. And the gist of it is that it discusses the West Main problem that I testified to before, and it talks in detail about the requirements of the city's pre-application process, and the timelines that were involved in that process, and how a permit process of that complexity and length created vesting concerns under the West Main case. And then, in addition, that the process that Shelter was being subject to was inconsistent with the Appendix L procedural requirements under the development agreement.
Talking more about this West Main problem, I'd like to pull up Exhibit C6. Patrick, this was an exhibit previously submitted by the city, and we'll get you a copy here in just a second. Do you recognize this document at C6?
Yes, I think I may have erroneously stated this was a November 21st memo, and it's November 16th memo from Mr. Niven. I believe it was discussed at a meeting on the 21st. But Mr. Niven prepared this memorandum in association with the vesting language that was being proposed for the replacement regulations, and he laid out three possible options for how those regulations could address project vesting. At that time, staff was recommending option number two, which would recognize the vesting of ASDP and SDP permits, that permits that had complete applications under the development agreement would remain vested after the termination of the development agreement for a period of three years from the date of issuance. And on the second page, I don't know if you can read it very well there, Mr. Niven stated, "It is the administration's support's alternative two, as it is consistent with the vested rights doctrine and the decision of West Main v. Bellevue. Since the administration requires a land use permit to be issued prior to the submittal of a building permit, a complete land use permit has been viewed by the administration and city attorney as part of the building permit process." So again, that goes to the fact that they have this very lengthy ASDP/SDP process, and that a notice of decision is required before an applicant could even apply for a building permit, and that would create an inordinate delay that would block applicants' vested rights that would be contrary to what is required under the West Main case.
Based on this memo, did you understand that to be the position of both the administration, so Director Niven's administration, and the city attorney at this time?
Yes, and I believed it was consistent with the West Main case, so I believed it was consistent with Washington law in general.
Next, let's look at Exhibit S9. Patrick, will you please describe what Exhibit S9 is?
Yes, so this is the city's application requirements for someone who is seeking a commercial or multifamily building permit, and it's very hard to read, but I believe this is a version that was updated as of September, looks like around the 20th of 2017. But so as you can see from going through that, there are a number of requirements, the supporting documents, you know, such as sediment control plans, and topographical surveys, and geotechnical design reports, copies of recorded easements, that kind of thing. But the issue that we've been talking about is right there under pre-submittal requirements, number one, land use permit notice of decision has been issued, so that means that an SDP or ASDP decision has been issued. So you would have to have an SDP or ASDP decision in hand before you could even start the building permit process.
And that notice of decision, just for clarity, that's the end of the process? That's not just a complete application, but that's the actual decision on the application? Is that right?
That's correct. The ones that I have reviewed for the Issaquah Highlands, I saw one that had 60 conditions associated with it, and it includes an analysis of every appendix in the development agreement. So it was a very lengthy document, over 40 or 50 pages.
So is this checklist, the city's checklist for building permits submittal, is this consistent with the West Main problem that the administration and the city attorney described in that memo?
Yes, if they didn't recognize vesting of the land use permits, it would create up to probably a two-year gap from the time that you would start a process to get to a building permit till you would be allowed to even apply to one. So that is absolutely inconsistent with West Main, if that was allowed to stand.
What's the problem with that, that delay? Why is that such a big issue?
Because under Washington's vesting law, the city or local government gets to establish the requirements of a complete application, but a development applicant, having met that requirement, is entitled to vest its development to the regulations that are in place on the date it submitted a complete application. So if the -- what happened in West Main was the city had created roadblocks that delayed the ability of an applicant to get a permit, and the concern there is that the city could change its regulations while you're going through this lengthy process, and that's not consistent with the concept that Washington adheres to, that a developer is entitled to vest their rights on a date certain upon submission of a complete application.
Turn next to S32. Patrick, what is the document at S32?
This is a December 4th, 2017, letter that was written by me to the Issaquah City Council in November of 2017. Shelter had met with Mr. Niven, and he had requested that Shelter publicly support the administration's efforts to have the city adopt Alternative 2 that we were just discussing in his November 16th memo. And so Shelter did do that. They appeared at some land and shore committee meetings, and also at, I believe it was December 4th, was the council meeting as well. And so they appeared at those public meetings and testified in support, and this letter was supporting Mr. Niven's analysis in his vesting memo regarding the West Main issue that we were just discussing.
So this was December 4th, this was a period of time after that November memo came out. Do you recall had Director Niven changed his opinion at any time publicly or to you about this West Main problem?
No, as you can see, this letter on paragraph 2 discusses the November -- I have the date as 17, so that was wrong, it was November 16, staff memorandum, and, you know, and states that Alternative 2 is consistent with the state's vested right doctrine and applicable case law because it prevents the creation of an unlawful hurdle that would delay allowed vesting to a building permit. So that was consistent with what Mr. Niven had stated in his testimony and in his memo.
Okay, so this next exhibit is S33. Patrick, what is the document at Exhibit S33?
So this is a November 9th, 2017, letter from myself to Mr. Niven that discusses the mitigation. the mitigation under the development agreement.
Why did you provide this letter?
Well, the first part of the letter goes to that issue that we were talking about before, which is whether Shelter had the legal right to enforce the development agreement or act in the stead of the master developer under it. And it details the designated successor, if you look on page 2, I think right there talks about the assignments that occurred under the designated successor. And then it discusses paragraph 3.18 of the development agreement, which is quoted right there, which essentially says that the parties have spent considerable time and effort to calculate the impacts, and they acknowledge that the mitigation and fees that were obtained by the city are reasonably related to and are a direct result of the impacts of the proposed development. And so what that was going to was that there had been a express acknowledgement by the master developer and the city that there was a reasonable and rational relationship between the development that was provided and the mitigation that was required for And so the remainder of the letter then just goes on to discuss why the idea that the mitigation would quote-unquote evaporate at the end of the development agreement would be inconsistent with Washington law, and particularly, in particular, the constitutional limitations on takings and RCW 82020, which is another statute that requires what's called nexus and proportionality between proposed mitigation and a specific impact of a development.
Okay, we have two new exhibits that go together, S34 and S35. What's that document?
This is an email to Mr. Niven that I sent, transmitting a copy of the letter that, excuse me, is Exhibit S35. The email is timestamped 11:15, 2017, and 11:11, 09 a.m., and the letter is of that same date.
So why did you provide this November 15 letter?
Because the Shelter's position was consistent with Section 3.23 vesting, which we discussed, and 3.232, that Shelter had vested to the provisions of the Grand Ridge Development Agreement, that is, the development standards and mitigation by virtue of its completed preliminary plat application and its site development permit preliminary applications, both of which were implementing approvals under the development agreement, Section 3.23. And so Shelter was seeking confirmation from the city that the city was acknowledging those vested rights and was going to process Shelter's development permits under the regulations in the development agreement.
Would that be the same or similar as to asking for an interpretation?
Yes, and it was, I would say more in the nature of a confirmation because we had been told, we had already gotten an interpretation in March 27, Mr. Niven's March 27 letter, that that was how the city interpreted vesting under the development agreement, and we had no, and we had no reason to believe that they were going to act inconsistently.
So turning back to your binder of meeting minutes there, I'd like to talk about the November 21, 2017 meeting. Who were the people that were present at this meeting?
That was Mr. Niven, myself, Mr. Young, and Ms. Heim.
And what was the purpose of this meeting?
So under the development agreement, there's a dispute resolution provision that required if a party invoked that provision, that the other party was to schedule a meeting within seven days to discuss the concerns. And so the November 21, 2007, meeting was in response to the November 15, 2007, letter invoking the dispute resolution provisions of the development agreement.
What did Director Niven have to say about your vested rights at that time?
Well, one of the concerns was that we had raised was this issue of not, the city not meeting the Appendix L timelines, and the city acknowledged that they weren't meeting them, but Mr. Niven indicated that his position was that the SDP preliminary applications did vest to the development agreement.
Did he put that in writing?
Yes, he did put it in writing, not, I believe it was on, in December 8. I may be a little bit wrong on that date, but I believe he wrote an email to Ms. Heim where he confirmed that Shelter's ASDP and SDP preliminary applications were vested.
So if you look at page 2 of the notes, about halfway, well, there's a section that's labeled Appendix L, and then a little bit further down, can you read what it says about an email to KN?
Yes, it says, "Send email to KN based on Appendix L. Have these apps submitted on these dates deemed complete."
Who is KN?
So that would be Mr. Niven.
Is that the communication that you were referring to a minute ago?
That was the communication from Ms. Heim that initiated the response from Mr. Niven that indicated that Shelter's pre-applications were vested to the development agreement.
So let's turn to Exhibit C4. And this was an exhibit previously submitted by the city. I'm actually, I'll represent that this is an email chain, and I'm going to start back at the very first email in the chain, so on November 21, 2017.
Yes, so if you look at the back page, that is the communication from Ms. Heim to Mr. Niven that lays out the permits, the preliminary plat, and then the preliminary application for the medical office building SDP, the preliminary application for the retail SDP, and the preliminary application for the office SDP. And Ms. Heim, so this is following up on the meeting that occurred in the morning, and she said, "We would like the city confirm our understanding that the following land use permits have been deemed complete per Section 9.1 of Appendix L to the development agreement and are therefore vested to the development standards in the development agreement." And so if you go up a little bit, Mr. Niven wrote back a little bit of a cryptic response that said, "Unless you received requests from city staff for additional information, these applications are viewed as complete per the terms of the development agreement." And then if you go up a little bit from that, Ms. Heim replies, "We have not received any request for additional information," and she said, "I am assuming that you mean the applications are complete and vested to the development agreement as stated in the email below and as we discussed in our meeting with you today," and she asked for confirmation. And so then Mr. Niven replies with a one-word email and says, "Yes." So our understanding from that was that Mr. Niven was confirming that our SDP applications and our plat application, we had already gotten a letter of completeness on, but particularly for the SDP applications, the city was confirming they were complete and vested to the development agreement.
So if you move further up the chain then, there's another email, a follow-up email, that the city submitted from Ms. Sloman to Mr. Niven.
Yeah, and so Shelter never saw the rest of this email chain until after this litigation started. So what you see on this first page is a communication between Ms. Sloman and Mr. Niven regarding the answer that he had provided to Ms. Heim earlier. And so Ms. Sloman says, "They aren't vested unless the council agrees to the vesting language. I'm confused." And then Mr. Niven says, "They are vested at this moment under the DA. If the council removes the proposed vesting language, they will lose their vested status." And then Ms. Sloman says, "Shouldn't that be clear in the response?" So this interpretation or understanding of the city was only shared between Ms. Sloman and Ms. Niven and was never communicated to Shelter.
Mr. Niven's statement there, "If the council removes the proposed vesting language, they will lose their vested status," is that consistent with what the development agreement provides for?
No, and it's not consistent with Washington law.
Patrick, can you please describe what's at Exhibit S36?
Yes, this is a March 15, 2018, letter from myself to Ms. Sloman, and even though Shelter had obtained confirmation from the city that it was vested to the development agreement because of its SDP pre-applications, it was also trying to obtain confirmation that its SDP applications themselves were also deemed complete and vested. And we got caught up in kind of a circular loop because the city, Ms. Sloman kept rejecting the applications as incomplete because she said that Shelter, she couldn't deem the SDP applications complete because the preliminary plat had not been finalized. In some of the rejection letters, she said that final plat had to be obtained, which would have been an event that wouldn't have happened until, you know, five or more years into the future. And so what she was doing was saying that she couldn't analyze the SDPs because the preliminary plat had not been approved, which was a position that was absolutely contrary to how the city had handled the Polygon SDP applications. In one case, they had actually approved the SDP before the preliminary plat had ever, had even been applied for. So it was an inconsistent treatment of similarly situated applicants. The letter itself was an agreement, basically, that said, "We object to the way that the city handled the permits under Appendix L, but going forward, if the city accepts the applications as complete, we'll allow the city to focus on processing the preliminary plat before it then turns to the SDPs." And so that's paragraph 4, it's a little bit off the page here. And then the city had set a goal of four to six months for its ASDP review and six to nine months for its SDP review. And then if you go down to this, at the bottom, the agreement was signed, it actually, I received a copy of it on, I believe it was Sunday, March 18, even though the letter was dated the 15th, which was the day before the city council then moved to adopt the replacement regulations.
Let's turn to Exhibit S37. It is a copy of the transcript from our December 5. Can you turn to page 80 in that transcript, please? Looking at page 80 there, there's some, this is a questioning of Ms. Sloman, and she's, I'll represent that earlier in this testimony, starting on 79 and possibly before, she's talking about this March letter that we were just discussing, the March 15 letter. Down there at line 11 on page 80, can you read what it says from line 11 through 18, please?
11 through 18, it says, "Question, thank you. Did the city ever, quote, 'refuse,' end quote, to process IHIFC's SDP or ASDP applications? Answer..." Answer: I would not use that word. We were trying to get applications that were complete so we could continue our review, and then we hit the roadblock of not having them updated to the replacement regulations."
In your view, is this accurate?
No, the, for instance, the medical office building SDP application was rejected, I believe, three times from the city. For at least two of those times, the only reason it was rejected was because the preliminary plat application hadn't been processed by the city. Again, that was inconsistent with how they treated Polygon, and had they acted within the timeframes of Appendix L, it wouldn't have been an issue. And so, well, I would agree with Ms. Sloman that the parties worked to try to address the issue so that we could obtain complete applications. From Shelter's side of the equation, I would say that there was a repeated refusal to process the applications as was required by the Development Agreement.
This next exhibit is S. 38. Patrick, will you please describe what S. 38 is, the document there?
Yes, this is an email to Mr. Niven that I wrote on March 16th, 2018. Mr. Niven had made a proposal to provide Shelter with some type of partial traffic impact fee credit for the mitigation that had been provided as part of the Development Agreement, infrastructure construction. And I wrote a letter to him that said that Shelter's position was that the mitigation had been allocated through the preliminary plat and SDPs, and that Shelter did not believe that Mr. Niven's suggestion for a resolution was appropriate based on the fact that Shelter had the vested applications that it did. And so then Mr. Niven wrote back and said that he assumed that I, Shelter essentially didn't want to have a conversation with the city, and I said, "No, that's not correct. We're always willing to discuss the mitigation and remain, you know, willing to do so." And then kind of recited the past history of the parties' discussions of the mitigation.
So the next exhibit is going to be S.
Before we start that, could we acknowledge about an hour and take a short break?
Sure. I can keep going and finish up, actually, pretty quick here. I'm not that far off from finishing his testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So this is S. 39, which is a copy of the transcript from our October 24th hearing.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask how much longer the applicant intends to spend with this witness, just for purposes of logistical planning on our side?
Not more than 10 minutes.
With respect, Mr. Chairman, we would request when the direct examination of Mr. Malaney is completed, at least a five or 10-minute break to consult with our client prior to beginning our cross-examination.
Okay.
Exhibit, as we mentioned, we're looking at the October 24th transcript. If you could turn to page 17 of the transcript, please?
Okay.
And actually, it starts, there's a discussion about mitigation that's starting on page 16 and maybe before, and starts to run into 17. Could you start on page 16 at line 23 and read through 17 at line 10, please?
Sure. You said 22 or 20?
16 at 23. There's a question being asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went to the wrong spot there. Okay. Question, okay, "Did you ever inform IHIFC categorically that their project applications, their SDP and ASDP applications would receive absolutely no credit for previous mitigation measures? Answer: No. To the contrary, I actually tried to initiate a conversation with Foster Pepper, to the contrary, to actually try and have that conversation about credits." Question, "And what was the response when you tried to initiate that conversation?" Answer, initially, the response, I interpreted the response that they did not want to have that conversation. They later clarified that they did, but we have never had that conversation." Do you want me to keep going?
No, you can stop there. So where did conversations leave off on the mitigation issue?
I believe that they left off with this 316, 2018 response.
Has the city followed up with you about mitigation?
No. I guess I should amend that a little bit because we talk about the meeting that was coming up, and I think that was a notice of default meeting, but there wasn't any other substantive conversation about it, and I believe Mr. Niven addressed it to some degree in his April 4th letter. But again, it wasn't a negotiation of what the credit should be or how it should be assessed. The position, my understanding of the city's position was that they contended that mitigation evaporated upon termination of the Development Agreement.
Turning to Exhibit S. 40. And this is backtracking in date just a moment. It actually has to do with this email, it looks like, that we just talked about. Can you describe what this exhibit is at S. 40?
Yes, this is the letter that I just testified to. It's a letter from myself to Mr. Niven responding to his proposal about deeply discounted traffic impact fee credit. And it reiterates what I just testified to, that Shelter, by virtue of its preliminary plat application, allocated the available development density to its platted blocks, and that and its complete applications for its SDPs are vested to the Development Agreement, and that vesting includes mitigation. So it just set forth the position that Shelter believes is consistent with Washington law on vesting.
Thank you. And then this next exhibit is going to be S. 41. What's the document at S. 41?
This is a March 5th, 2018, letter from Mr. Schneider to Mr. Niven, and I believe it formally invokes the Development Agreement's Notice of Default provision, and it sets forth the defaults that Shelter believes that the city is in violation of various provisions of the Development Agreement.
Did you have a follow-up meeting in response to that letter?
There was a meeting. I believe it was sometime in late March. I don't, maybe it was March 21st, but I'm not positive of the date.
Would it be helpful to have notes to refresh your recollection?
Certainly would.
So, and these are meeting minutes that are the same as the others we talked about at the beginning of the year. They're not being submitted as existing, but used for reflection. So Patrick, what happened at this dispute resolution meeting?
Mr. Niven was there, Mr. Leal was there for the city, representing the city, and Mr. Schneider attended, this, I believe, was the first time that he had attended a meeting with the city because things had kind of broken down and it looked like litigation was going to be more likely.
How did Mr. Niven react to the conversation that you were having?
He got very angry and, at one point in the meeting, grabbed his materials and indicated that he was going to walk out. Yes, it says, the note says, "At 2:05, KN jumped in to state that he needed to leave for another meeting. KN was agitated and getting angry." And then he threatened to leave the meeting, but ultimately, he sat back down and stayed.
You had mentioned a moment ago that the mitigation conversation may have continued at this time. If you turn to the second to last and last pages of the notes, what conversation did you have about mitigation in this meeting?
There was a discussion about whether the city would recognize Shelter's vested rights or whether they were contending that those rights had been somehow de-vested or divested. And then Mr. Niven talked about possible mitigation and indicated that our letter that tied our mitigation to our vested rights didn't feel like a resolution, and that Mr. Niven felt that the city had a good reason to charge us new fees, for example, for non-motorized impact fees and parks for non-residential development, which had not been charged under the Development Agreement.
Did you ask for a response regarding this mitigation issue from Director Niven?
Yes, I believe that there was a discussion that the city would get back to us. I'm trying to find that, though, to...
I'm looking at the last page, third bullet point.
One, two, three. Yes, so that's right. Mr. Schneider said it would be helpful if the city would provide a response on the mitigation issue within 30 days, and to include in that response how mitigation fits in with vesting. And he indicated that he hoped that the city would respond in less than 30 days to hopefully allow for a quick and simple resolution, short of litigation.
Did you get a response from Director Niven?
No.
Did you ask Director Niven about, for any details in terms of the plat vesting and what that would mean in this meeting?
And I talked about both the site development permits and the plat, and Mr. Niven confirmed that the plat is vested and will be reviewed based on the standards in the Development Agreement. And then I pointed out that those development standards expressly include the mitigation component, and he, Mr. Niven, said that was an issue and that he would get back to Shelter on it. And he tried to equate the mitigation that had already been bought and paid for to impact fees that are typically paid at a building permit, which is a different situation, but he indicated there was room for conversation and possible credit. But again, we've never heard anything about them since that time.
Will you please read the last three bullet points of these notes?
PM, that's me, asks if it was the city's position that even if we had a complete application, the replacement regulations could retroactively unvest an application. The next bullet point is KN, Mr. Niven, offered to give PM his opinion, but ZL, that's Mr. Leal, cut him off and said they'd get back to us. The final bullet point is Pat Schneider said it would be helpful to have the city's official position. PM, that's me, pointed out that we don't have any answers and that these are $30 million questions, and the clock is ticking.
Are those bullet point summaries consistent of your memory of how that meeting ended?
Absolutely.
Was the April 4th letter that we discussed earlier, was that the next communication that you received from the city or Shelter received?
I believe so. At that point, Mr. Schneider was getting a lot of the communication, but that is my recollection.
Thank you. No further questions.
So at the request of the City Council, we'd like to take a 10-minute, is 10 minutes inadequate? Be cognizant of the bewitching hour. We'll take a 10-minute break.
All right, we're back in session. I guess the first question I have for counsel is, what kind of timeline do you think this will take for your cross-examination?
But if it's the council's preference, or the commission's preference, I know that it's late, and I'd be happy to defer this to a future date if that's...
Well, if you really think you can get through by 10 o'clock, we're willing to, we're willing to flex a little bit, so we won't die. None of it, well, one of us might turn into a pumpkin, I'm not sure which one, but I think we can go forward, as we have some other things that we want to talk about at the end of this, so please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience, thank you. Mr. Malini, you referred variously during your testimony in a direct examination, and I believe you quoted from Ms. Heim's prior meeting notes, from her various meetings with City of Issaquah staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did you prepare any notes of your own regarding these meetings?
Some of them, I'm sure that I did.
Have you retained any of those notes?
I don't recall if I have them or not.
Do you have them with you tonight?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I believe you indicated that you had been practicing land use law in some fashion or another since 1992, is that correct?
That's, I graduated from law school in 1992, and I started at Foster Pepper in 1997, but even in my prior firm, I did several land use and property-type cases.
And I believe that you testified that you had been representing private clients in the City of Issaquah for approximately five or six years?
Longer than that, I think, from 2005.
And did you deal with Ms. Heim, excuse me, Ms. Sloman and Mr. Niven during that period?
I did.
And other staff members as well?
Yes, Mr. Favor, I recall, and the city SEPA official, whose name is escaping me right now, but...
Okay. Could you describe your rapport with staff of Issaquah during that period?
What do you mean by rapport?
Did you have an amicable cooperative relationship with the city's permitting and development services staff, or was it antagonistic?
I would, I would say for the most, I mean, we certainly had disagreements, and particularly during the negotiations on the Costco Development Agreement, that took a year and a half, and there were times when we butted heads, but there were also times when they helped solve problems and get things done.
Characterize your rapport with staff and your relationship with staff during that period as professional?
Yes, I would say so.
During your meetings with Issaquah staff members, and particularly Ms. Sloman and Mr. Niven, that were referenced during your testimony concerning the shelter application process, were you representing shelter in 2016?
Yes, in the fall of 2016, I believe I attended my first meeting with the city for shelter.
Did some of those meetings with staff involve face-to-face meetings without the presence of the city attorney?
Yes, they did.
Approximately how many meetings did you meet with city staff without the city attorney being physically present?
I don't know, I couldn't give you a number.
Did you subsequently meet with the city attorney, or have discussions with the city attorney regarding the shelter matter?
Yes, I had discussions with Mr. Haney, and then, as you know, I was, attended the meeting that you attended as well.
Did the city attorney during those meetings, saluting myself, convey a position regarding the effect of the development agreement termination on your client's development rights?
I'm trying to remember, I, I want to say that Mr. Haney only physically attended one meeting towards the end of the process. I don't recall him being in any of the prior meetings, so...
Did Mr. Haney express to you during those communications or that meeting what his position was concerning the effect of the term, the pending termination of the development agreement?
I don't recall exactly what he said in that meeting.
Do you have a copy of Ms. Heim's meeting notes with you?
I do not, but I can get a copy, is there a particular, or maybe I do, I do, they're on the bottom here. What meeting are you interested in?
It was the February 6, 2018 meeting, and according to Ms. Heim's meeting narration, the attendees included Mr. Haney, Lucy Sloman, Keith Niven, Tia Heim, and yourself. This is toward the very end of the packet.
Okay, hold on. Yes, that, are you talking about the February 6, 2018 meeting?
That's correct.
Yes, so that was a dispute resolution meeting, and I believe that's the one that Mr., that may have been, I'm not positive on it, the first one that he attended.
Can I ask you to turn to the second page of that letter?
Sure.
Or that meeting notes, please?
The second page, okay, I got it.
And the third dark bullet point up from the bottom of the page, beginning with Patrick Ast, may I direct your attention to that? Okay. Could you please read the statement attributed to Mr. Haney immediately following that?
Yes. Haney said that after termination, neither side is bound, so if there are permit applications after termination, then new mitigation should be provided. If you are still bound to the mitigation after the termination, then what would be the purpose of the termination?
Thank you. Does that reflect your recollection of Mr. Haney's comments at the meeting?
My recollection was that his position was that the mitigation evaporated, so that would be consistent with, what, what is written here would be consistent with that.
Can I ask you to then turn to the first page of the meeting notes for the February 6, 2018 meeting?
Okay.
And beginning about a third of the way down the page, beginning with the bullet point sentence, Patrick asked about the city's position?
Yes.
And could you please read that and Mr. Haney's response?
So, Patrick asked about the city's position that pre-ops vest in order to avoid a problem with the West Main case, and asked for the reason that the administration would treat urban villages different from the rest of the city. Lucy responded by saying that pre-ops weren't required for out applications. She claims that we pointed out that the DA didn't require them, and the city agreed. Tia disagreed with this assertion, and said the city did require them, and asked why we would have had them if they were not required. Lucy's response was that because they were so helpful and a great tool for us, we agreed to disagree on this. Lucy says we have different memories. And then the next bullet point is, Haney pointed out that everyone agrees that there are only certain things that vest under state law, so where would we possibly get the idea that SDPs vest? He also pulled out the IMC, which says nothing is required prior to building permit.
Thank you. Does that reflect your recollection of the discussion by Mr. Haney at that meeting?
Yes, and I think if you look down further, then it says, I read the memo that staff had written regarding that issue, and that's referring to the 16 November letter for, memo from Mr. Niven, and the point was that even though the city code does say that there shouldn't be anything in front of a building permit, that in fact is not the city's practice.
And what was Mr. Haney's response to that, as indicated in the next bullet point?
Says, Haney laughed it off and said he was going to give Wayne, that I assume means Mr. Tanaka, his partner, hell for that, although Haney was actually the city attorney at the time of the memo.
Thank you. Are you familiar with Section 1801-050C of the Issaquah Municipal Code?
I believe that I am, though I don't have it verbatim in front of me. Is that the one on vesting?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I don't need you to read that, Mr. Malini, that's already been read into the record earlier in this proceeding. I just want to clarify, are you familiar with that reference?
Yes, yes, in fact, that's what we were discussing, that staff's practice wasn't consistent with this provision.
And calling your attention back to Exhibit S9 provided by the applicant, this is the submittal requirements that I believe were retrieved from the city's website, if I'm not mistaken, by the applicant in preparation for this proceeding.
Yes.
Is it your understanding, Mr. Malini, that that submittal requirement document supersedes or otherwise trumps the language of the city's code as expressed in IMC 1801-050C?
Well, my understanding is that staff was requiring that as a prerequisite to being able to apply for a building permit, that an applicant was required to have a completed SDP notice of decision, or ASDP notice of decision. Whether or not that's consistent with the law, as written in the code, that's a different issue.
And I think my, my question, though, is if there is a conflict between the two, between a codified provision of the IMC that directly governs a particular issue, and an informal guidance document on the city's website, which would control?
Well, this isn't an informal guidance document, it's the application requirements to obtain a permit.
But that document is not codified, if I understand correctly?
No, but it's the result of the city code's directive that the city should determine the application requirements for the various permits that the city allows, or...
And which code requirement is that, Mr. Malini?
Take me a minute to find it, but it's the, it's the requirements section for obtaining a permit, so what constitutes a complete application?
I'm sensitive of the commission's time. I will not make you look up the provision, but I just wanted to call your attention and specifically ask you about the interplay between IMC 1801-050C and the actual guidance document that was referenced and cited by the applicant at Exhibit S9.
Uh huh.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask you a few questions regarding the plat application. I believe that your testimony was that the IHIFC or shelter plat application, and I think you used the word, clearly did show building footprints. Is that your position?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to hand you a copy of, or my colleague will hand you a copy of city's Exhibit C9?
Yes.
The record, this is the land use application for the High Street Collection plat submitted by your client. Do you recognize it as such?
Yes.
Okay. Do you look at the bottom of the first page and state the date submitted reference?
Yes, this was 8/1/2017.
Are you aware of anything in this assemblage of materials that shows building footprints as part of your client's plat application?
Yeah, as I testified in my direct, this app, this application included a written narrative that discussed the SDPs, and then subsequently, the, an amended plat was, what do I call it, not a site plan, but let me see what it's called exactly. It's hard to read here. Yeah, well, it's just labeled as a preliminary plat, but there was supplemental submission that included the building footprints.
Okay, and I'll get to the supplemental submission in a minute, but I'm attempting to get your response concerning my question of whether or not that assemblage of materials that was submitted under the application form on August 1, 2017 depicted building footprints?
This one does not, that's correct.
Thank you. Could you please turn to Exhibit C12, identified as the High Street Collection at Issaquah Highlands plat project narrative, dated July 15, 2017?
Uh huh.
Is also submitted concurrently with or in conjunction with your client's plat application. Do you recognize it as such?
I do.
Do you please turn to Page 2 of that document?
Okay.
And at the very bottom of that page, the last sentence, beginning with the word "the plat," could you please read that for me?
"The plat does not propose construction of any structures, rather the allocation of allowable development included in the plat will be implemented by future-specific development proposals. The applicants anticipate the future development on lots created by this plat could include buildings reaching up to eight-story heights, some of which may include ground-level retail, with parking provided either on-grade, below-grade, or in a parking structure. Applicant intends that future build-out of the property will be integrated into the existing Issaquah Highlands community and will comply with the development standards set forth in the development agreement."
Thank you. Could you please turn to city Exhibit C14? C14, okay, all right. This is a submittal regarding the High Street Collection at Issaquah Highlands, filed under the city's mybuildingpermit.com portal, and indicating a submission date and time of December 15, 2017.
Yes.
Do you recognize it as such?
Yes, I see where it says that.
Could I ask you to turn to the second page of that document?
Yes.
Okay. Could you describe this document for me, Mr. Malini?
Yeah, so this is the updated application materials that I alluded to in my testimony, and it shows the building footprints that were included for the various, that were assigned to the various blocks, consistent with the SDP applications that were being prepared.
Thank you. And to clarify, your testimony, as I understand it, building footprints of this type were not included in the submittal for the plat application by your client in August, or as part of the August 2017 submission packet. Is that correct?
Well, I guess I struggle to understand the relevance of the question.
I would respectfully ask you to answer the question, despite whether you feel it's relevant or not.
Yeah, well, both the original submission and this submission were submitted during the time the development agreement was in place, and this submission was accepted by the city. It was, it was both uploaded and sent to the planner, and ultimately used in the notice that the city sent out on the plat, so...
Thank you, I get, my question again is...
Yes, chronologically, you're correct, but I just, as I said, I don't know the relevance of that.
But just to clarify, I believe what you said there at the end of that answer, this material, these depictions of building footprints, were not included in the August 2017 submittal, and were instead submitted several months later in December of 2017? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. By the time that this document was submitted in December of 2017, had the build-out period under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement already expired?
I believe the build-out period expired in September of 2017, so yes.
Thank you. By the time that your client had submitted this December 2017 supplement, had the city council, in discussing the replacement regulations, vetted the potential to include state law vesting in those replacement regulations publicly?
I don't recall exactly when the city council discussed that. There was a period of time in November, when there were no, no, there was no vesting language, I'm sorry, in October. Then, there was a notation in the replacement regulations that the vesting language was under review by the city attorney. My recollection was that the vesting language that ultimately ended up in the regulations was not made public until February 8 of 2018.
By the time that the December 2017 supplement to your client's plat application was filed, had your client already submitted its SDP and ASDP applications that are at issue in this proceeding?
I'm, without having the chronology right in front of me, I can't say. I believe that some of them had been submitted, but I, don't quote me on that.
Fair enough, thank you. May I ask why your client submitted this document in December 2015, and specifically, did the, did the city request the submittal of this document?
As I testified...
Sorry, 2017, pardon me.
As I testified to, my understanding was that Shelter had anticipated that its SDPs would have been accepted by the city long before this time period, had the city complied with the Appendix L time requirements, and that the idea was consistent with what the plat narrative said, that the plat was, and with the discussions that we had with Mr. Niven all along, the plat was the first step in implementing the development that required both the plat and the SDPs, consistent with his direction in the March 27 email, or letter regarding how the city would treat applications that would be vested to the development agreement. So, to answer your question, the reason that they, that the building envelopes, I think, were shown was because that was consistent with the SDP applications that either had been submitted, or were in the pre-op process, again, I'm not exactly sure where they were, and so it was consistent with how we had discussed the development unfolding with staff as early, back as the early part of 2017.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call your attention now to a few of the references in the various meetings that were cited in your original direct testimony. First, I could have you look at the meeting notes from September 21, 2016?
September 21, hold on, 2016?
I believe so, yes. September 21, 2016, this is about half an inch through the, from the top of the packet.
And you said September 21? Okay, I have it.
Okay, could you please turn to the second page of that document?
Okay. Okay, I have that.
Specifically, the fifth bullet point, beginning with, Keith said that all, and then quote, "your mitigation will evaporate and disappear," end quote?
Yes, and that is however he acknowledged, yes.
Could you please read the second sentence, beginning with however?
However, he acknowledged that the city can't make landowners pay again, something that the landowner had already paid for, so there might be some number of trips vested in the overlay, but they may be directional only.
How did you construe this statement from Mr. Niven?
So, again, referring back to my direct testimony, at this point in time, there were no permit applications or, that had vested to the development standards, and so the discussion was, if the city was going to terminate the development agreement, how would this infrastructure that had been constructed be credited to the properties that hadn't been built out yet under the agreement? And so, I, my understanding of this was, Mr. Niven was saying, we have a different system now in the city for how we look at concurrency, and it's, and so there's a difference between the development agreement system and our new system, but that he recognized that the city couldn't make a developer mitigate twice for the same impact. Then, the last reference is, they may be directional only. I believe that referred to the fact that commercial trips might have a different directional component than a residential trip, so a commercial trip might be coming in in the morning and going out in the afternoon, where the residential might be switched.
Thank you. And with specific respect to Mr. Niven's qualifier, that to the city, or acknowledgement that the city can't make landowners pay again, something that the landowner has already paid for, just to clarify, that, that addresses your double-dipping concern, if I'm not mistaken?
That's right. That would be consistent with my understanding of... That's right, that would be consistent with my understanding of both the constitutional nexus and proportionality requirement and RCW 8202020.
Thank you. I'd next like you to briefly look at the meeting notes from the November 14, 2016 meeting. This apparently involved, according to the meeting notation, Keith, Gary, Patrick, and Tia.
Okay, I got that.
In the first bullet point on the first page, beginning with Gary started off, there is a reference in the second sentence, beginning with, "We are not tied to," could you please read that sentence, please?
"We are not tied to any specific plan and want to focus on a positive working relationship with the city. We have heard their message that they don't want more residential, and are willing to set that aside for now and work on commercial."
Thank you. And if I could now have you turn to the second page of that document, beginning with the second bullet point, and Patrick asked about?
Yes.
Could you please quote that paragraph?
You want all four sub-bullet points, or...?
You're welcome to summarize, if that would be easier and more expeditious. How do you construe this, and is this your -- consistent with your recollection of what actually was stated at the meeting?
Yes, so again, this goes to the discussion of that first bucket of unvested mitigation, and I was asking him about how it might be addressed in the termination process down the road, and Mr. Niven was indicating that some types of mitigation might be easy, and others might be hard. For example, there were issues with local and regional water charges because those had another purveyor involved in them, and so possibly the local charges might not apply because there was an acknowledgement that water infrastructure had been built as part of the development agreement mitigation. And then, there's a discussion about government service fees and fire fees, acknowledging that a fire station was constructed in Issaquah Highlands as mitigation, so there might be an exemption from fire impact fees. And then, there's a discussion about traffic, and how that would be addressed.
Thank you, and to clarify, is it your understanding that those statements by Mr. Niven indicated the city's potential willingness to credit some of the previously paid mitigation for the Issaquah Highlands area?
Yes, at that point in time, I mean, the provision says, "He is open to hel," it said, "Traffic is the most difficult to address, but Microsoft," I think that's what MSFT stands for, "would have had some amount of trips, so the city could assume that we would have some amount of vested trips." He is open to help with this argument, that we should be fully mitigated up to a certain number of trips, and that you could draw on that trip bank as you build.
Thank you.
And, I mean, I think, I'm not sure if it, I believe it's the March meeting, there was a discussion of possibly issuing a mitigation certificate, that Mr. -- that was an idea that Mr. Niven put forth.
Thank you. To now turn your attention very briefly to your direct testimony regarding Appendix L of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. This, I believe, was already in the record as a city exhibit, but I will cite it as it was most recently introduced or reintroduced by the applicant at Exhibit S-25.
Yes.
And this is Exhibit L, Part 1, the land use flow chart. You testified about the timing of processing of Shelter's various project permits under this chart, do you recall that testimony?
Yes.
Could I please direct your attention to the top of the page, after the word "chart" in parentheses? Do you see that?
Yes.
Do you see the asterisks after that word?
Yes.
Could you please then look at the asterisks in the footnote to that page, beginning with the word "assumes"?
Yes, it says, "Assumes adequate staffing levels are determined by the city. Times shown in brackets are maximum elapsed time from the preceding step." So, my understanding of that would be that it should take 10 days or less, for instance, to go from application submittal to complete application decision.
Thank you. Then turn your attention to Exhibit S-36. This also was previously introduced by the city as an appendix to the staff reports underlying this hearing, but most recently reintroduced by the applicant as S-36.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, I got that one.
Could you please turn to Page 2, Section 6?
Yes.
And read the last sentence of that section, beginning with "Therefore..."
"Therefore, both parties reserve all legal and equitable rights, positions, and remedies, and execution of this letter agreement shall not be construed. A waiver of either party's respective legal rights, positions, and remedy, including, without limitation, the legal requirements of the development agreement, the effect of the replacement regulations, or vesting." Sounds like a lawyer wrote that.
Thank you. Finally, I'm going to be introducing City Exhibit C-42.
Thank you.
For the record, this is an email exchange between Lucy Sloman and yourself, and I believe that it spans the period between January 12, 2018, and January 17, 2018. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I recall it.
And I apologize for what may be a little bit difficult to glean with the different colored interlineations, where Ms. Sloman has inserted text into your original email for purposes of a reply, but do you see where she has done that?
Yes.
Okay. Could I please turn your attention to the Friday, January 12 email, in which responses have been interlineated, and specifically, the fourth bullet point on the second page?
One, two, three, okay, got it.
Could you please read your statement to Ms. Sloman, beginning with "the city"?
The city, well, it looks like there's a word missing, but it says, "The city would that IFC's preliminary plat," I suppose it would, should have said, "Would agree that IFC's preliminary plat and SDP pre-applications are currently considered complete and vested to the development agreement." And then, she wrote, "Based on the current draft of the replacement regulations, if those change significantly, we'd have to revisit this. We all need that caveat. I see you have that below."
So you and your client were aware, if I understand it from this response, what the city's position was regarding the potential for the vesting language under the replacement regulations draft to change, is that correct?
So, in November, I believe, starting around November 15, was when we had the meeting with Mr. Niven. That's where he encouraged Shelter to publicly, he indicated what the administration was going to propose, that was the alternative to, in his November 16 memo, and he encouraged Shelter to support that publicly, which Shelter did, and the reason it did was that it believed that that alternative was consistent with Washington vesting law, and...
If I, I'm sorry, Mr. Malini, could you please just answer the specific question that I asked?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, the, and then, but it's important for you to understand that, and then, on December 8, Shelter got the confirmation from Mr. Niven that its preliminary SDP applications were vested to the development agreement. So, it was in that background, as I indicated before, the city didn't publicly disclose it was changing its vesting, the vesting regulations in the replacement regulations until February 8, 2018. So, during this timeframe, the current draft regulations had acknowledged the continued vesting of SDPs.
Okay, but my question is, did this response by Ms. Sloman convey to your client, and to you, on behalf of your client, that the city's position on vesting as it related to the replacement regulations was potentially subject to change, or contingent on the ultimate outcome of the city's legislative process?
Well, I wouldn't agree with that characterization, but I mean, I'm looking to see where she talks about later on.
Well, I'm specifically asking you about the language of Bullet Point Number 5.
Yeah, but she, what she says is, "I see that you have that below," and so I'm trying to find where it says that below, what she's talking about there. Yeah, so if you look at the second-to-last bullet point, it says, "The letter agreement would be contingent and include a reservation of rights whereby the agreement would terminate, and IHIF would be free to pursue all available remedies and appeals, in the event that there are material changes to the vesting provision in the proposed post-development agreement zoning regulations, as the current staff-proposed vesting language is consistent with the city's existing vesting regulations and IHIF's understanding of vesting law."
And that reservation of rights, Mr. Malini, is the provision that you quoted from Exhibit S-36, from the letter agreement dated March 15, is that correct?
No, what I just quoted to you was from Exhibit C-42, which is the second bullet, the first bullet point on the last page, which is what the language that you were talking to me about, where she says, "We all need that caveat, I see that you have that below." That's what that refers to. The language that is actually in the March 15 letter is a bilateral, so it's different than this language, but...
Thank you, no further questions?
Okay.
Just one quick administrative point of clarification, I actually had a See, I think Exhibit C-42 already for the city, so by my count, that last email should be C-43.
Thank you.
I only had one just clarifying question to ask of him. Patrick, a minute ago, you were testifying, and you mentioned that there was a December 8 verification from Director Niven that the apps had vested.
Yes, did I get the date wrong?
Well, did you mean by chance that November, there's a meeting on November 21st, and then an email follow-up on November 27th? Is that what you were referencing, or was it something else?
It's the one that we talked about before, that where Mr. Niven has the one-word answer, "Yes," and I could find it somewhere. Oh, here we go. Yeah, I see you're correct, I'm sorry, I had the date wrong. So, it was an email from Mr. Niven to Ms. Heim that was sent Wednesday, November 22, 2017, at 7:25 a.m.
What exhibit number are you looking at?
C-4.
Thank you. No further questions?
Okay. You've completed?
Just to circle back with Mr. Malini briefly to the bullet point, if I could just get your answer to the question, what, in your view, does this mean, the response that was interlineated by Ms. Sloman in the fourth bullet point?
Okay, hold on a second.
I'm specifically referring to the text, "Based on the current draft of the replacement regulations, if those change significantly, we'd have to revisit this."
So, we're...
I don't mean to, I don't mean to draw this out, but I do need to object, because we had talked about the scope of cross and redirect, and this is outside of the scope of anything that I just redirected.
I would respectfully disagree with that, this is within the scope of what Mr. Malini testified in relation to the city's position on the replacement regulations, and communications to and from city staff on this issue, and whether, and to what extent staff had indicated that they would be vested going forward, irrespective of the ultimate outcome of the city's legislative process.
And, and all that I asked for was a correction on the date, not for any more substantive content.
I think we've heard enough.
Thank you.
I think we've heard enough, so, appreciate your time, we need to do a couple of things. The first thing is to agree on next meetings, and I think we currently have proposed February 5 and 6. The 5 would be a special meeting, the 6 would probably be a regular meeting, that would give us some flexibility agenda-wise, starting at 6:30 and ending around 10, if that's agreeable. Okay. I understand there was concern about who was going to maintain the record, and so we've identified another public, or another city employee, Carla Zabriskie, who is willing to hold that record, and so I'll be delivering that to her in the morning. And then, I need some insight or information on if you're going to, if you need both February dates, if you think that the witness testimony and cross-examination is going to require both of those nights, because we have an obligation to inform the public of when it would be reasonable for them to be able to provide comment. So if your sense is that the proceedings will require all the time, then we'll need to extend out when the public may be able to make their comments, and it's just an administrative thing, we want to make sure they know when that's appropriate, so I just ask you to take your best guess, and would offer, legal time usually is not necessarily consistent with chronological time. Just saying.
Well, in terms of estimating length, we don't know what kind of cross or re, we'll have to hear from the city about what they intend to do when we're finished. We're going to call Ms. Heim, and then, we're going to call Mr. Young, and I would imagine the direct would fill up the next meeting between the two of them, and then it'll be up to whatever the city intends to do with its witnesses after that. But on the issue of the public comment, again, I understand that's typical for your meetings, but again, I do not think that's an appropriate part of a quasi-judicial proceeding, where you have two adverse parties who are calling witnesses, and so what you hear ought to be limited to the testimony of the witnesses called by either party.
I agree, but we still have a responsibility of providing the opportunity for the public to provide input, and so we need a best guess. So it sounds like your sense is that you will be finished with your witness examinations in the first, on the 5th?
That depends on how, I think on how much cross there would be of Ms. Heim before we get to Mr. Young. So, if, not taking into account any cross, I think we could just about fill up the one evening with the two of them.
And it's very likely the city will have a lengthy cross-examination of Ms. Heim, so I, keeping in mind, I believe, per the procedures that the commission adopted at the beginning of this proceeding, that the rebuttal testimony from both parties would occur after the public had an opportunity to speak, my strong assumption is that we would need at least one and possibly two more dates after the February 5 and 6 dates.
So, do we have enough information to be able to schedule? Okay, we'll figure it out, let me just say that, so, thanks for the indulgence of... it out. Let me just say that. So, thanks for the indulgence of staying a little longer than we would have chosen, but it's been absolutely thrilling. So, I will adjourn the meeting.